An agreement pertaining to the Vineyard subdivision at the southeast corner of Rab Road and Airport Road. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kous?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston? Mr. McCarthy?
Is there anyone here wishing to speak pertaining to the Fourth Amendment of the annexation agreement pertaining to the Vineyard subdivision? Is there anyone present here tonight that would like to speak pertaining to the Fourth Amendment to the annexation agreement pertaining to the Vineyard subdivision? And third and final time, is there anyone here wishing to speak pertaining to the Fourth Amendment to the annexation agreement pertaining to the Vineyards subdivision? Thank you. A motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Kous?
Aye.
Order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kous?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. McCarthy is unable to join us physically tonight, but is calling in if a majority of the council approves of that action. So I entertain a motion that Councilman McCarthy be authorized to participate in this meeting remotely under the provisions of Division 5 of Chapter 25 of the town code.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Mr. McCarthy, are you with us at this point?
I am.
Thank you.
Aye.
We'll move to the omnibus agenda, items considering routine, and would be handled by one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I would like to remove Item A and Item C.
Item A and Item C, correct.
I had a couple questions about the bills and B.
Thank you. We have no omnibus agenda tonight, so we'll move first to Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of December 20th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I would like to amend the minutes on Page 5, the third from the last sentence. I sent the council and staff previously the proposed change, but I would like it to say, or I move to amend the minutes to say Councilmember Stan Nord recused himself and left the DS at 7:28 PM before the discussion of Chapter 11 Building Code and returned immediately following the vote. The vote was six to zero in favor.
We'll take that as a motion in a second.
Do we need a second?
I'm sorry?
Does he need a second?
Do we need a second on this, Mr. Day?
Yes, let's proceed as a motion.
I'm sorry?
Yes, let's proceed as a motion.
Yeah. So we need a second.
Second.
I think the amendments are totally within line. I certainly support it. Further? Please call the roll. We're voting on the change and then we'll vote on the minutes.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. That amendment is approved, and now please take a vote on approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting. Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The minutes are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of December 29th, 2021.
So moved to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Lorenz, before you start, though, could I ask you to turn the volume up? With these new barriers, the sound is not quite as crisp for me. I'm having a hard time hearing here. Ms. Lorenz, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of clarifications. Waterfund had a whole bunch of refunds. What were those for?
Can you provide a page?
Oh, I'm sorry. Twelve of the packet.
Those all pertain to, looks like, one particular property manager, so I can check into that. Typically, that happens when someone moves out.
Okay.
And these look like rental units, so I can check into that and get back to you.
Okay. Moving up from there, Page 11, the CDB, Community Development Fund, Community Development Administration, Windows and Orlando Tree Project, were these part of the CDBG plan?
Yes, we had planned, in the action plan, it included new windows for the community healthcare clinic. That's that first expense of $31,657. The Orlando Tree project was new plantings along Orlando Avenue. That was also part of the plan.
Okay. And last but not least, just because it is a pilot, and I'm curious about expenditures, Youth on a Mission has $111 and some change, but it doesn't say what that's for. That's up on Page 1.
Okay, I'm looking.
About the middle part of.
Oh, my guess is that pertains to the food from the last time they met, but I also will confirm, check into that and confirm.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Further on the bills?
I just want to make sure that I'm excluded from any.
Ms. Cummings, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I want to make sure that I'm excluded from anything having to pertain to me or in relation to anything that I've done in the bills.
I'm not sure of your question.
No, I was just saying, make sure before we voted that I was excluded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll make sure I talk a little bit in light.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Item B is approved. Item C is a resolution to waive the formal bid process and accept quotes totaling $49,463 from Synergy Electric for the purchase of Genetek licenses, access cameras, along with installation and integration services. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
I've got a question about what this project is overall from a bigger scale. The write-up says there's 125 security cameras in the town. Seven were replaced as a part of a pilot, and now we're doing 17 more at a cost of about $3,800 a camera. What's the plan with the next 101? I mean, are we looking at more projects coming forward to replace all these cameras with the same system?
Eventually, we'll be phasing in replacement of all the cameras. This is just the first start, and we will continue on. That's part of the action tonight in terms of not only the cameras, but the video management system as well, so the software and the management of that. So ultimately, what we're talking about is security cameras at all of the public facilities.
Okay, so this will be phased, and this is just another phase to eventually replace them all. Do I understand that? All right. So that means this is going to be over a $400,000 project in just a particular phase of it. We have not bid this out, and that's an extreme amount of money. And it seems, my question is, are we getting into a package that is proprietary and we are stuck with this vendor?
We are not going to be stuck with this vendor. We tried to explain that at this time, Synergy provided the most cost-effective approach for the system, but we can get quotes on the system from other vendors. Ultimately, yes, we are recommending that we lock into the system organization-wide, but we are not locking into the vendor. So that does provide us an opportunity to have standardized system throughout all of our facilities rather than a certain video management system at the police department, for example, and a different video management system at the community activity center and the like.
Okay, so since I understand that this isn't going to lock us into a particular vendor, and we can stick with the same solution going with different vendors, then why aren't we bidding this out?
Because I don't believe it was necessary. We checked with the purchasing procurement, my mind just went blank, on the government purchasing programs, and this is a system that we're using, and we're familiar with Genetek, and we explored other systems. So we got quotes to compare. If we bid it out, generally, we have to bid out the type of service, not the system. We don't bid out for Genetek. Genetek is the system. So what we're asking for council's approval to use a particular vendor to get the system.
Yeah, Genetek is not who the contract's with. It's with.
No, Genetek is the system. The contract would be with Synergy as the vendor.
Yes, so other vendors sell the hardware and sell the install. The write-up said that the only thing staff did was check equipment prices with like CDW places online, but not the install and everything else, which, you know, most install packages, whenever you've got equipment, I mean, the install and labor's probably more than the actual equipment. So we have a purchasing policy that says bid out if it's over $25,000. This is well over $25,000, looking to be, you know, over $400,000, and we should be bidding this out. That is my concern as to why we're not, because I haven't heard a reason why we can't bid it out. You've said that other vendors can supply the equipment and software, so why aren't we bidding it out?
Well, I thought we explained that in the report, but I guess I'll indicate that we can certainly issue a bid, but that doesn't mean we would get Genetek. So we could end up with all sorts of different types of video management systems. The reason we're coming to you tonight is we're asking for authorization to not bid it out and go with this particular vendor and the system that we believe most effectively meets our needs.
So I thought you said Genetek was not proprietary and other people sold it. So is this a proprietary system where we have to go with this one seller of the Genetek product?
No, no. We can get the system from other vendors. Generally, when we bid something, we say we need a video management system, and then different providers can provide Genetek, or they can provide vendor or system B, C, or D. And if you're suggesting we go with the low price, then at that time, we could end up with all sorts of different systems. That's exactly what we're recommending we avoid by picking our system that we want and then get prices from different vendors that can install that system.
So I've been involved with government bids before in writing the RFPs for them, and we've been able to put in, it has to be Microsoft, you know, X, it can't be something other than that. Is the town not able to do that anymore?
I guess I'll ask Mr. Day or even invite Ms. Gataraju to come forward, because we've had, we've invested this, we've invested time into exploring video management systems in the last year or so, so we can explain to you what went into selection of this system and why we're going through this process, and we can explain how it fits into the procurement program or not.
Let me ask this. Were any local companies or other companies even looked at to see if they sold this product?
We're very familiar with Genetek, because, as I indicated, we're using them for license plate recognition, so we know who is providing Genetek as well. I'll invite Ms. Gataraju to come forward.
Good evening. So the reason we're asking to waive bids on this one is because there is some pre-engineering that goes on before we can actually bid out cameras. In this case, Synergy did come out and do a site walkthrough, provided cone of coverage, and did some preliminary engineering work before we could identify which cameras need to be replaced where. So if we want to go out for a bidding process, we do need to have a pre-engineering study throughout all of our facilities before we can go through the bid process.
Okay, I mean, does that mean that we have to go with this company? There's no other company that sells Synergy product? Is that what you're saying? Or this?
Genetek, yes.
Genetek product?
No, Genetek actually is a video management system. Multiple carriers sell that. For various areas within the state, there are selected integrators for that product, and Synergy is one of the local integrators. I, you know, for bidding purposes, we do have to, I'm sure there are other Genetek providers that are probably not as local as Synergy, and we can, you know, these guys are local providers.
Local? I thought the write-up said that they were like Willamette or somewhere up by Chicago.
They're in central, I believe they're in central Illinois, downstate area, downstate Springfield area. Others that sell Synergy are outside the state, I believe.
For some reason, I thought their information they gave was somewhere up in Chicago.
No, it's Springfield.
What is it? Williamsville?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm glad that they're closer, but still, this should be bid out. And then I'm still more intrigued to find out, what's the total solution? Because it says this is 24/7 monitored. Does that mean we've got someone sitting in front of the monitors looking at this stuff 24 hours a day?
No, we have a policy to retain videos for 14 days.
Okay, so is this solution something, we're just recording, and if there's an incident, then we can go back? We're not like surveilling people live, real time?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, then I don't really have a problem with the solution. It's just, we need to bid things out, and I would like to see this bid out. So I would support this if it comes back to the council with it being bid, because this is a big project. It's going to be over $400,000, so, you know, at some point, we need to decide.
Clarification on this. So in this particular instance, with the police department, right now, we have to redo the cabling and the whole nine yards, which is why this project is a little bit more expensive. In other facilities where we already have CAT6 cabling, probably that cost will be significantly less.
Well, then, please present that to the council, what the overall scope of the project is and overall cost and how many phases there are, so that way we know.
If I could also point out, you had indicated that you're comfortable with the Genetek system, then if we bid it out, and if there was a way to bid out the system, a identified system, which is not usually what we always do, but, you know, there's a chance that the vendor then could be from New York. And if you're comfortable with that, I guess we could take time and try to bid it out, or we could go through the government joint purchasing programs, which is what Ms. Gataraju got proposals on and found out that Synergy was a best price.
I'm okay bidding it out, but if it comes back that the only other provider is like New York City, and that's it, we've got two choices in the entire US.
They could be outside the state, if you're comfortable with that, then, you know, then it's, again, that presumes that we're going to do, to identify the system and limit it to only those that sell that system, then the vendor will likely be either Synergy or it would be out of state, is the likelihood. So that's one of the reasons we explained in the report that we recommend waiving bids and moving forward with this vendor.
So you're saying the only vendor in Illinois is this one company?
Mr. Nord, you've hit your 10 minutes. We'll come back to you. I would like to hear from Mr. Day concerning if we were in violation of our procurement policy by doing this. That seems to be something that was brought up.
No, the council's not going to be in violation of procurement policy, because the procurement policy is regulating the procurement by staff. Council can at any time decide that they want to waive bids and is authorized to do that. In fact, it couldn't go in and make a policy that it wasn't allowed to go back and change at a later date. So council always has the authority to waive any requirements of the procurement policy for itself. The primary purpose of the procurement policy is to regulate administration and staff purchases and the way it's handled at that level.
Thank you. Further on this item? Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. So just to sum up, this is, I appreciate all the additional staff information and answers, but to add out, what I heard is that staff compared prices and got the best available price for the equipment, and that the method that they did it ensured low cost and ensured that we at least used a central Illinois company, the closest under to our community, as locals we could cut it. But, you know, as I mentioned last meeting, you know, I'm a big fan of smarter cities, and this is certainly an investment in that. It's helping us to be more effective, efficient, safe, and secure operations. I love this type of an approach for us streamlining these type of operations, and I frankly appreciate staff's effort to attempt to use local and keep the cost low, so I'm supportive.
Thank you. Further on the item? Mrs. Lorenz?
I just would like, and it's going to feel like I'm asking it again, but really, I want to get a clear answer to whether or not we are in compliance with our purchasing and procurement process. And let me frame it up this way, and maybe our legal counsel can answer it. Aren't there like three or four scenarios in which we can waive and have waived purchases in the past? One that comes to mind is sole provider. I think another is like professional services or something like that. What are those other one or two items, and how does this fall within those, one of those categories?
Again, those are bid waivers. You're not bound by those. Those are examples of ways, things that council could waive bids. Council always has the authority to waive the bidding requirements unless there's a state statute that requires it. Council can never pass an ordinance that it can't go back and change later. So you can always go in and waive bids under the procurement policy.
Okay.
Further on the item?
I think, if I could add to that, I think generally, our general practice has been, for sole source, we come to council, we ask council to authorize the waiving of the formal bidding process because of sole source. We ask council to waive the formal bidding process in instances like this where we have a system and we've checked joint purchasing, and we maybe acquire it through a joint purchasing process. You know, that's generally one way when we come back and ask council to waive the formal bidding.
And, I'm sorry to interrupt, and this is going through a joint purchasing?
Well, we checked the joint purchasing prices, but Synergies was lower than joint purchasing.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right. Okay.
Mr. Nord?
When you checked pricing, did you check install or just the hardware?
Just the hardware.
Okay, so we don't have a competitive bid for the install. What percentage of this project is hardware versus everything else? Roundabout guess could be close. Is hardware?
Is installation.
And this is not sole source? We are not being asked because of the three criteria that allows bids not to be done. We are asking specifically to waive the bid, and that's why I'm not supportive of this. I would like to see it bid out, so that way we can tell our taxpayers, our constituents, that yes, we did some due diligence to make sure this was a fair cost. And if it turns out this was the right vendor, fantastic, you know, but we at least done our due diligence. Thank you.
And I would finish up by saying staff did due diligence on this. I think that was an unfair statement that you made. Staff did research on this, and they looked at pricing from joint purchasing. They talked to vendors, so this wasn't a quick decision. This was a well-thought-out decision. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Resolution is approved. We move to general orders. First item is a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to the annexation agreement pertaining to the Vineyard subdivision at the southeast corner of Rab Road and Airport Road.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
And we have a second? Is there a discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Resolution is approved. Item 8 is a resolution approving the re-subdivision of lots 332 to 336, 10th addition to the Vineyard subdivision, Fourth amended preliminary plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item 9 is a resolution conditionally approving the final plant of the re-subdivision of lots 332 to 336, 10th addition to the Vineyard subdivision.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. That resolution is approved as well. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing participation with the National Fitness Campaign for installation of a fitness court.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mayor, if I could introduce this and invite Mr. Damry to come forward, so he'll be present to respond to any questions council may have. This item under new business tonight is something that we haven't done before in terms of this particular relationship with the National Fitness Campaign. Mr. Damry coming forward, okay. And basically, staff looks at this as an opportunity. And basically, staff looks at this as an opportunity to try something unique, somewhat unique for our community, in one of our parks, and partner with the National Fitness Campaign. We think the concept fits well with a variety of our plans, the Towns Comprehensive Plan, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and frankly, even the McLean County Health, Community Health Improvement Plan. So, this was, this was a concept that was brought to our attention by representatives of the National Fitness Campaign, and we thought it deserved exploration, and so we're presenting this to you tonight, as indicated in our council report. If council approves the proposed resolution, then we will move forward and continue conversations with National Fitness Campaign for potential installation of this fitness, I guess, amenity, and, and come back to you at such time that we're, we're ready to talk about funding and actual acquisition of the piece. So, I'm going to, I guess, turn it over to Mr. Damry, who can introduce a couple of concepts, comments about the amenity, and then we'll respond to your questions.
Yeah, so, the National Fitness Campaign has come to us a few times, and initially, it didn't, it looked like, you know, we were just buying a fitness center, but we're, we are looking at buying so much more than that. They, they come in, they not only, they provide the court itself, which includes the design that fits a effective workout system, that's attractive to a variety of people, that can be used year-round, low, low maintenance, and sleek-looking, and all that sort of thing, so it's very attractive, very welcoming for anyone that's interested. But they also provide grant funding, which we've already earned a $25,000 grant from them, sponsorship support, in helping us identify potential sponsors, and installation guidance as we go through the process of, of trying to install it, and the feasibility of where to install it. We've already kind of gone through that process, and identified Rosa Parks as, as one of our top sites that we'd like to look at, as well as a few other sites around town, and within our park system. But then after that, they also provide us a lot of campaign services, so it'll help us with a sort of a ribbon-cutting-type ceremony, a mobile app to further interact with, with users, ambassador training, so that there's programming that's provided through the ambassadors, and help people that may not be as into fitness, a way to learn how this system works, and maybe to get further involved in fitness, classes, challenges, and so forth. So, it's, it's really kind of a nice package that they're trying to create. They're not just selling a piece of equipment, they're selling a whole load of services that, across the nation, to help fight obesity, create better opportunities for healthy, active, healthy living, and active living, so. And it fits really well into, as Ms. Reese said, our master plan, the Town Comprehensive Plan, and the Community Health Improvement Plan, so.
Comments or questions? Mr. Nord?
This grant, can this money be used with a different vendor that is not National Fitness Campaign?
No. This is National Fitness Campaign.
Okay. National Fitness Campaign is a company that sells this solution?
No.
What are they?
National Fitness Campaign developed the equipment, developed the workout system, and has all those services to really meet their mission, which obviously fits very well into meeting our, our goal of providing a healthy infrastructure within the park.
So, who do we write our check to for this? Is it National Fitness Campaign?
Yes.
Do we write it? Okay, so then, they're essentially the person selling it, or the company selling us the solution?
Yeah, they're, so they're not just selling the equipment, they're selling the whole package.
The whole package.
We had to go through a process to even qualify, and that's kind of why, I mean, that's what was kind of confusing to me upfront, was, okay, you're asking us to put in all this, submit this information, so we can buy a piece of equipment, but that's not it at all. They're qualifying us, not only for the grant, but for a site. They want to make sure that our community has the infrastructure around it, that we have the population that would use it, and, and I don't know exactly all that goes into that analysis, but that, I had to answer a number of questions from them to help qualify us. Then I wrote the grant, to qualify for the grant, that, which comes to this point of getting council approval, to now move forward with the idea of, you know, council supports it, town administration supports it, and we'll move forward with, you know, the, the financial goals and installation planning.
You had mentioned that you had looked at some other places, are we also planning, or is staff planning to put one of these at other locations in time as well?
No.
Okay, so it's just the one?
No, one per community.
Yeah, we, we've looked at several sites to identify what we think are the best feasible sites.
Okay.
And Rosa Parks is rose to the top.
And I did not see anything in the write-up about the lifespan of this, what the maintenance costs are, and whatnot, because, you know, our environment, we get, you know, snow, rain, sleet, and, you know, freezing temperatures, if the material's soft, you know, it's probably going to deteriorate faster than warmer, warmer climates. What is the cost of maintenance?
It's very low, there's, there's very little mechanisms, I guess, it's, it's a lot of posts and platforms, you're really buying everything around it. Now, you do have like the cables with, that have the hand-rings and things like that, that, that give you the opportunity to use, do a certain exercise within that, and I don't know all of the exercises that you use, all these things, these, these components with, but they're very streamlined, they're very simple, there's not a lot of mechanisms in them for them to rust, or, you know, wear away in the road, and so forth. So, they really hold up very well in weather, they're in all sorts of different types of climate across the United States, so over 1,000 installed.
So, in our climate, what's the, what's the lifespan?
I would, I would liken it to a, a, a normal playground, which we've typically gotten 20 years out of a playground.
So, is that...
That's the kind of equipment that you're kind of looking at, the way it's installed and everything.
So, is that what the company has said that the lifespan is?
Um, I don't know exactly what the, there, there is a warranty that's listed in the information that was provided.
So, while you're looking that up, another question is...
If I could just jump in and indicate, we obviously would have the same concern. We have no interest in acquiring property and, and facilities and amenities that would be a burden at all. So, I think that the fact that this equipment is located in places like Minnesota, even Rockford and Bell, I think it's Bell, I can't remember, but a community near Rockford and Lincoln, Illinois, which is just down the street, I think those are pretty good examples, that they're built to maintain all sorts of weather.
Do you know how long they've had them?
Lincoln, I believe, was installed in 2018 or 2019, I think the same thing with the Rockford area, and I believe Minnesota's, some of Minnesota's installations may be a little bit longer than that.
Okay.
But my point is, we have certainly the same interest here.
Sure, then, another part for the maintenance is, this is advertised as being a year-round facility, so, you know, when it snows and ice, what's the cost to go out there and clear this off, if it's really going to be a year-round facility?
Yeah, well, by year-round, if you can tolerate it, and you can get out there and work out, then it could be year-round, it's accessible year-round. Would there be very many people out there today? Probably not, no.
Okay, so then this is not a year-round facility, this is going to be...
No, but it's, it would be, if the, if the temperature was 40, and there was no ice on the ground, it would potentially be used in January, February, March.
Probably the same, probably the same way that people go out and use parks and playgrounds 12 months of the year, they sometimes don't go out in pouring rain, but it is still available to them, this would be very comparable.
I, I think the point is, it's up to the user, not the equipment or the program. I, I can tell you, anecdotally, in my business, there, I had people riding into my store today on bikes, so it's, again, it's up to the user, it's not up to the system.
One last question before I listen to my colleagues. Could you explain the public input that went into building this outdoor workout facility? You know, spending money there versus somewhere else?
I think the public input on that, Mr. Nord, is the comprehensive plan, the community health plan, and the parks plan. I don't think we've ever gone out and said, we're going to have public input on this piece of playground equipment, on this sandbox, or anything like that. There has been public input on, on the concept, certainly not on a piece of equipment.
Staff, is that correct, that public knows and has been asked about having an outdoor workout facility?
It, it has been highlighted in our master plan, and then Parks and Recreation Master Plan is specifically called out for outdoor fitness, fitness stations, fitness, not specifically a fitness court, because that's a, obviously something that they probably didn't know about, but specifically outdoor fitness stations, which this is very comparable to.
Sure, and I'm familiar with like the ones around Tipton Trail, stations that are put out there, which this is very, very different. You know, what's around Tipton Trail, it's not as, well, it doesn't look like $180,000 fitness station. Over at Prairieland Elementary, they've got a fitness area out there, you know, which is kind of what I was thinking as well, which doesn't look like another $180,000 project. So, you know, it doesn't sound like the public really was presented this solution. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That would be a fair statement, but I don't think it's the same...
I think that is true. We didn't push this out and do a survey to see what people thought about this particular fitness equipment. We went with conversations, and I guess, subject matter experts.
I think this is the...
And, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, and the, and the knowledge of what sponsorships have occurred in other areas of the state and the country on this type of installation. Yeah, to use that as background.
Anyway, I said one more question, but you mentioned this was accessible, did you mean it was like accessible for like handicap, ADA accessible?
It is, yes.
Solutions for folks that may be wheelchair-bound and things like that?
Yes, it would be accessible for that as well, when I'm, my previous accessibility was just being available to the public, but it will be accessible as well, correct.
Okay. I'd like to hear from my colleagues, thank you.
Further on this item? Mrs. Lorenz?
Could you provide some clarification on where we are in the process of getting sponsorships to defray the cost? Has that begun yet? No. And do they, National Fitness, help with that?
Yes.
Okay. Does, is there going to be a fair amount of staff time involved with that?
I mean, it would probably be me, being, working with them, that may involve a couple of their staff members, but probably on a limited basis, more along the lines of installation.
Okay.
And the programming side of it is what I envision. I, I would handle it to, to the point of completion.
Okay. So, we don't really know what the appetite is for sponsorships?
Yeah, we, we, we've held off on, on opening up that inquiry with any potential sponsors, until we really knew we had the support to move forward with this plan, and, and work with, then, work with National Fitness Campaign to identify and present this whole, this, this system, and this package, this, this fitness court, to those sponsors.
Okay. If we don't get the sponsorship to cover all of the cost, is this going to be an additional budget item in 2023 budget?
In the, it, it could, not an additional budget item, because we have tentatively included this in the proposed budget, we just haven't reflected the revenue yet.
Okay, the revenue being from...
Of revenue that we would get from sponsorships.
Okay, alright. So, kind of pulling my lens back a little bit, just kind of philosophically thinking here, I did do a little bit of looking out at their website, their mission is to build an outdoor fitness court within a 10-minute bike ride of every American, so that would suggest that they would want to put more than, one, more than one in a city. Do we know if they have reached out to, say, even Bloomington?
I believe they have. They've been pretty active in Illinois here the last couple years, identifying communities or talking to communities, and finding out who's, who might be interested. That's how most of the ones that have been installed already have been done, and there are several in, in the queue, I guess, if you want to say that.
Okay. I don't know, it, it, it seems a little gimmicky to me, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, it's, it's a nice thing to have, it would be icing on the cake, but I think we've got some really good infrastructure right now with respect to, you know, our Linear Park, you know, the, the investment that we continue to do, which I think is good for our Constitution Trail, our park system, you know, I, I just, I think we've got a, a good base. Would this be nice? Sure. I, I, I don't know that I'm convinced it's necessary, I also can't help but wonder about our businesses, and does this, does this become a competitor to businesses, particularly locally-owned gyms? You know, I mean, how do I look at the owner of the workout company and say, yeah, this is a good idea, when this could very well be taking members away from his gym, or any gym, you know, pick your gym. But I guess I call upon the, the local ones, because they are, they're local, you know, and they're not, they don't have a big corporate, you know, backing behind them. So, I'm concerned about the competition nature, and I don't know if, Mr. Damry, you've got anything you want to speak to that?
I actually think it's a little bit more of a gateway to better fitness. I think it could actually promote more individuals that maybe aren't using equipment, maybe they're just walking along the trail, they see this, they start to try it, they get interested, and they take it to another level, and, and join a gym. So, I don't, I don't see it as really as direct competition, I think it really introduces more people to it, and I think that's our, ultimately, that's our goal, and I think that's National Fitness Campaign's goal, is make it accessible, and, because you're not going to join a, a gym when you don't know what you're doing, and you, you have no idea, you don't want to be embarrassed, you can even somewhat do this in a quiet, you know, you can avoid the busier times, you are in the middle of a park, but you know, you can still find some times where...
At midnight.
Yeah, but, but they guide you along through it, and that's where the ambassador program comes in, that's where, you know, providing some sort of programming with it, that's going to be targeted, people that don't work out currently. So, I really see it as introducing people more to fitness and growing from there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor, thank you. Is the National Fitness Campaign, are they a for-profit business, or are they a nonprofit initiative that is focused strictly on promoting health and fitness?
I believe they are nonprofit, I don't know that for a fact, that, that is probably in there somewhere, but it, I, I know what they've been, what they've kind of done already, and where would that $25,000 grant already has come from, is from national partners that they've already partnered with. So, wherever they're getting money has gone into research development, development of equipment, the systems, so I believe they are not-for-profit, but I, I did not see that in there.
That's a important consideration for me, I would echo some of the sentiments that I heard from colleagues of mine before me speaking, in that, one, promoting fitness and healthy lifestyles and opportunities for this community, in that, and diversity of opportunities, I think, is a priority, it fits into our strategic plan, I like that that is something that this community appreciates and wants, and certainly something that I support as well. This specific proposal, it, a couple of things hit me, which is really kind of led to my question. One is that it didn't seem to me, unless I'm wrong, that this was specifically on the town's radar, it was more something that this National Fitness group reached out, and then reached out, and then reached out, and reached out, rather than us seeking this, seeing the value in it, and seeking it ourselves. That's one. Two, I mean, are there other companies out there, or other organizations that provide similar infrastructure-type things like this fitness court we're talking about, or is this really a unique product that nobody else is doing?
It's unique, and, and I think that's what drew me in finally, because I agree, I was a little skeptical at first as well, when I first saw it, and... I was a little skeptical at first as well when I first saw it. And they've been involved in Illinois, like I said, statewide. They've been targeting Illinois Park and Recreation Agencies. And, and by targeting, I mean, in cooperation with IPRA. And they, you know, they've identified and I've seen so many communities entertain it, see the benefit to it. And I've heard from the, the benefits of that at this, from, from the big picture state level. And they're getting a lot of good responses from a lot of the communities. Like I said, that's where I was referring to. There are several in the queue right now that are, are considering these, because they kind of do these through grant cycles as opposed to, you know, selling them to you. You're, you're, like I said, you're qualifying to get these. The most recent one that I can remember that's been installed is New Lenox Park District installed one. And I think, but that's what, what drew it to me is it's more than just buying, because there are other systems we could buy, but it's similar to what's out at Prairieland. And it would just, we'd put it out there, we'd install it, and we'd be done. Use it as you want and as you can. But again, nobody is very familiar with that. So, they provide so much more systems to introduce you to it, to utilize it, to make, take advantage of it. And it's, it's well-designed. It's gonna, it's a good workout, you know, seven stations, seven body exercises and so forth. It's going to be something that people are going to benefit from. So, I think it's the best system that's available.
I will jump in. It does appear to be a not-for-profit. And one of the things I think that caught my attention along, you know, following conversations with Mr. Damry when I took a look at it, is some respectable firms that, that we are familiar with have signed on as sponsorships in other communities. OSF Healthcare and Kiwanis International, other, other groups that we are familiar with that I think have a good reputation have also bought into the concept. So, I think that was one of the, one of the things that caught my attention in our conversations.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification, especially on the nonprofit side. It's something that I, as I was reading through this item in the packet, it, I found myself going back and forth on this proposal, trying to determine if they are just trying to sell us a product and are, you know, fluffing it up to make it seem like it's more than that, but that's all it is and, or not. And again, I support the overall idea. I also share some of the concerns that were echoed and kind of see both sides of this, see both sides. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just gonna read the statement that the National Fitness Campaign is a nonprofit organization that has been dedicated to helping communities fund, build, and activate outdoor fitness courts for the last 40 years. And I'm going to speak a little bit to the competition thing, because I think it's, it's, it's not, it's not a strong issue in my opinion. No matter what you do in this world, there's competition in how you measure it. Is it direct? Is it indirect? Sometimes does competition help you? I will say anecdotally again, my second anecdote for the night, that the bike share program that the town had actually helped my business a little bit. It got more people onto bikes and thinking about, maybe I should have a bike. So, I don't see how a passive piece of equipment in a park is going to threaten the some 45 health clubs that we have in our community. I just don't see that happening. Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate hearing the remarks of my fellow council members on this. It's good to hear our diversity of perspectives. I, like some of the others that have already spoken, you know, support obviously healthy, active programming and infrastructure. I think this is a great opportunity to invest in health-related public playground infrastructure and systems. You know, I, I think we, we find ourselves in a time of pandemic that showed us how important outdoor public spaces and active infrastructure are to our residents. All you had to do is go out on our trails and door parks and see that they were packed with our residents that needed an outdoor healthy outlet and how, to see how valued those assets are in our community. Not to mention all the plans that everybody's already talked about and the thousands of residents that participated to let us know their thoughts on this type of infrastructure. So, I think we've heard quite a lot extensively from our public. I, I think that this is a unique playground asset that does not exist anywhere in our community, is not offered by anyone local. It is a bit of a unicorn, I believe. You know, it's a, it's a unique investment in a public park playground equipment setup. You know, we, we all recently approved accessible playground equipment at Carden Park to improve accessibility for a wider audience of citizens. You know, this investment would do the same thing. If you think about it, most of our public playground equipment is for children. This is one of the first, if not the first investment in playground equipment in the town of Normal aimed at a broad range of adults. It helps the town to provide recreation and fitness options for a greater number of residents of the town of Normal. Planet Simple. Obviously, I won't beat on the, how well this aligns with the comprehensive plan and the McLean County Regional Planning Commission Health Improvement Plan and our parks plan. I think others have done a good job mentioning that. But I also think that this is, what I haven't heard talked about is that this is also an investment in a broad range of accessibility. Mr. Nord thankfully brought up that is from a mobility and accessibility perspective. But this, this community playground investment, if we move forward with it, will provide at least some option for health and fitness for those that aren't in a position to invest in the other more expensive options that others have already talked about in our community. This is truly a broad accessibility opportunity for our community that we've never seen and, and frankly, don't have. I think it's very unique. I think our residents are very interested and extensively using our outdoor active infrastructure, and this is one more investment to help support that and support it. Thanks. Oh, I do have one question actually for Mr. Damry. Assuming we were to move forward tonight with this, can you help us understand what's next in the process? And, and is there a timeline that you foresee for this process? Can you kind of walk us through that?
Yeah, I'll be meeting with, sorry, I'll be meeting with a representative from National Fitness Campaign and we'll start to talk about sponsorships and, and that sort of thing and the presentations, how that presentation will look and so forth and, and start to do, that would be the next step. As we get a closer, I think I've set a sort of a timeline of about six months for doing that and hopefully come back to council sometime in June with the, the approval to actually purchase the equipment and move forward with the installation with knowing exactly how much revenue or sponsorship money we have to offset that expense.
So, I heard next step is go fundraise?
Basically, yes.
All right, good. That's part, part of what I wanted to understand is where that fell and how we're, how, at least your, your vision of what that looks like. So, I mean, are we talking two years, one year, three years in your mind for something like this? If, if we move forward with it?
Six months till, till we approve purchase. And then, you know, a timeline of about three to four, five months for installation after, you know, the order's been placed. So, we would install a concrete pad that would accept the, the surface that we would install on top of the concrete pad and, and then installation of the actual equipment and then hopefully a nice event at the end.
Thank you.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you. So, first I'll start off with my question a little bit. I know, and I know you talked about the sponsorship a little bit. I wasn't skeptical of this because this is very similar to the project we did with CGI with the videos. The only difference is we didn't have to put anything up front to prep. So, that's the only difference. But the majority of it was they offered us services through sponsorship. With that particular one, it was that they had to be local sponsorship. Is this one, one that can go beyond local? So, say if there's a business who's just, or, or an entity, I should say, I won't say necessarily a business, but an entity who is so pro-fitness, but they, they may be out of Indiana, but want us to be able to have access to this equipment. Would that be acceptable? Or does it, like the CGI program, it had to be local, local entities only?
I don't think that there's a restriction on how local it has to be. I do, they've already have national partners that have supported them. So, that's, like I said, that's kind of where that $25,000 grant money came from essentially. And I know they continue to look for that to offset, I think, everyone's installation, like within Illinois, if they find an Illinois partner. I know they are actively looking at that and that would help us. But we would be looking more locally, but that doesn't mean we're restricted to local, from my understanding.
Okay. And then, you know, just for, for my comments as well, I think Councilmember McCarthy kind of stole a little bit of my thunder with one of my comments, just in the fact that, just knowing my own self and my own story, I've struggled all my life with weight, having polycystic ovarian syndrome. And when I first moved to Phoenix, Arizona, I could not invest in any type of gym membership or anything of that nature. And so, I relied on nature to, to be what I needed it to be. And actually, the, I was talking to someone not long ago, the area in which I would go hike and run on a regular, they've now built houses on. And so, there are people who want to but can't afford to. And I think this is a great opportunity for them. Even now, for me, yes, I can afford a gym membership, but there's some gym memberships I can't afford. And sometimes I don't want to, the gym memberships I can't afford are the gyms that are constantly packed. So, there's times I don't want to go to the gym. And so, like even the summer, a lot of times I would just run on the trail. But it would be great to have, you know, I don't have to wait necessarily to get home to do some strength training, have access to something so readily available. So, I think this is a great opportunity, especially again, for someone like me who's been on that journey, who over the last course of the last two years have lost a little over 50 pounds. I can certainly be a poster child of what can happen when you become dedicated to a healthy lifestyle. And it doesn't always, you know, financially, yeah, sometimes it's not feasible for some of us to afford a gym membership, but to have access to this type of, these type of amenities are certainly helpful to us. Thank you.
Further on the side, Mr. Nord?
To add on to Ms. Cummings' comments about not being able to afford memberships, I would like to see more consideration for folks that can't afford memberships to gyms to possibly be able to get some subsidized memberships, you know, because we've got the CDBG grants. That way, they can actually go out and exercise, not just on a rainy day, which is what we're building, or a sunny day solution, which is basically what we're building. And, you know, it also then excludes people that don't live close to where we're putting this facility as well. So, I see that as a better solution to help what Ms. Cummings brought up. The question was, or a question, he said that, you know, we need people to show folks how to actually use the equipment, just like at a gym. Are town staff going to be paid to go out and show people how to use equipment? I mean, who's, who's going to be showing people how to use it?
I am not sure exactly the details of the ambassador program, but that's kind of what I envision initially, is the ambassador program is going to be staff that's going, not staff, but I even hate to use volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
Yeah, but I think there are going to be individuals that are in the fitness world that will, can help show how you use that equipment. We would probably add and complement that with some programming that would have paid staff.
Okay, so there'll be a subsequent funding ask to pay people to show folks how to use this equipment?
Yeah, but they would be specific, it would be fitness programs that we would say, you know, we're going to run every month. I don't even know they would be ongoing programs as much as, here, we're going to show you how to use this. It'd be more of an introduction to kind of thing, I believe. That's what I envision it being. I, I haven't seen what their end results are, what their end programming is, but we'll do as much as the public wants. If they would, you know, if we get, if we offer a program and we get 10 peoples to sign up for that program, that's, 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 that's a good, that's a good program. So, we'll, we'll run it. And if people want it, we'll, we'll provide it. We'll also be very cognizant about not, you know, taking too much time of that. We want to make sure it's available for, for what it's, always has been intended for, to be available and accessible to everyone. But I think that, that you need that programming piece to introduce people to it, to show them how to use it, to keep them accountable to their workouts. You know, I mean, I know I always do better when I'm planning and with, for an end goal, you know. So, this is, that's what we'll try to provide in that.
Sure, okay.
But we'll also not lose sight of the fact that it indicates on one of the, one of the pages of the council packet that there's also an app, the Fitness Court app. So, once you're familiar with the system, you can use your own phone and app to, to continue on. I guess I just want to clarify, you know, you started your conversations, Mr. Nord, with suggesting that we have a, a workout facility grant program. And I can't, I just, I don't see how that would be something that we would be able to put together. I don't know if, certainly wouldn't qualify for CDBG funding like you suggest, or, or maybe you're just using that as an example. But this particular facility, if council supports moving forward, one of the, in, one of the reasons we recommended a location such as Rosa Parks, Rosa Parks Commons is because of the, the adjacency to the trail, which is used by hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in that area, and lots of bike riders and walkers and joggers and, and the like, but also people can drive there. So, I think it is, it is pretty accessible. And I'm not talking ADA accessible. I'm talking about people being able to access it by bike or trail or walking, sidewalk, auto, bus stop, whatever the case may be.
Okay. So, somebody's going to get paid to show how to use the equipment. Could be existing staff, could be some other company that wants to use the facility. But, you know, we've got a gym that's in that area. You know, I see this competing from folks that owns, that, that own gyms. And I would be more supportive of this. If you go out and get the funding first, and if competition is not an issue, then maybe these gym owners will actually pay to have this put up, so that way their name can be on there. And then the whole competition issue is irrelevant, because they're the ones actually paying for it. So, I would like to see the funding mechanism first, because right now it's coming to us saying, hey, we want the money. If we can get people to fund it, fine, but if not, it's still going forward, even if zero people commit dollars. And the $25,000.
That's not, that's not true, Mr. Nord. We said we're coming back to you before the equipment is acquired. That's been in the report and we've stated that. This just is giving, giving us direction to move forward and talk about sponsorships. If council has no interest in doing this, we wouldn't spend any more staff time on it. We're, we're getting council direction to move forward and continue the conversations with National Fitness Campaign and sponsors. And we've indicated we come back to you before the equipment is acquired. Council authorizes the acquisition, as Mr. Damry indicated, as the report says.
Okay.
Hopefully in, in July.
Then I'm very confused, because Ms. Lorenz, I asked if this was in the budget and, or I asked a similar question. You said it was in the budget.
I indicated that we have included this in the proposed budget.
Okay, so then the money's already allocated to go toward, or it's going to be allocated whenever we approve the budget. So, I would like to see.
And then we come back to council and ask for approval to expend the money, as indicated in July is our goal to come back.
Okay, I would still like to see the funding, all the donors identified ahead of time, so we know really what the, what the ask is of council for how much money is needed. I see this as a nice-to-have, but it's a sunny day solution and it's a want project. We've got streets and infrastructure that need dollars. I'd rather see these dollars go, go there at this time.
Mr. Nord, following your line of thinking, should we eliminate swimming programs, teaching kids how to swim? Because we have to pay people to do that. We could take those dollars and put them into street repairs. Is that what you're? We could take those dollars and put them into street repairs, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, actually, if we think back a little while, whenever COVID hit, there was conversation about getting rid of one of the pools because it was not a year-round solution. So, you know, we're talking now about building an outdoor park that we've already identified is not a year-round playground.
So you're, you're in agreement with reducing that program?
No, I didn't say anything about pools. I'm saying that this is a year.
Is there further discussion on this item?
Mayor Kuss, if I could just make one more comment about the, the pools. When we came to council, again, just clarification, when we came to council during the COVID discussion and looking to cut our budget, we did recommend not funding staff and funding opening of the pools because the pools are seen as a quality of life issue and while they're valuable during the COVID year, that was a significant subsidy. And not only was it closed because of the COVID protocols, but also we recommended considering closing the pools because of the subsidy for staff, not because it's not a year-round facility, it was because being open from Memorial Day to Labor Day is a significant subsidy on our budget and we were looking to cut our budget.
And, and one thing I would, I thought about here too while this conversation was going on is if you, you look at other activities in the community, you'll find professionals associated with that, with that activity, who because they're passionate about what they're doing will actually volunteer their time to help make that work because it's not, especially at that small business specialty factor, a lot of the reason people are doing that work is because it's very important and vital to them to do that work. So I think in terms of your ambassador program, I think you're gonna see people like that step up and say, hey, yeah, I want to help.
Yeah. Well, we, we haven't, to answer part of your question there, we had, that's exactly our plan, is to come back in six months. Here's the funding plan, here's the sponsors that we've laid out. And we'll know a lot more about the ambassador program because that, that's gonna be, I think, partnerships, you know, more than it is funding. It'll be partnerships that we reach out to. And it'd probably be, target was gonna be some of the workout centers that are in the area. Because that's where our professionals are that know how the body works and how these, these components on a fitness court are to be used. So that's, that's gonna be part of the plan here the next six months.
Thank you. Further on this item? Mr. Nord, you've had your two, you've had your two comments. Is there a further discussion?
Request for information.
I'm sorry?
I, I have a request for information.
I can't hear you, Mr. Nord.
I have a request for information.
You can request that information after the meeting. You're allowed two 10-minute points to speak and you've used your two minutes.
A request for information doesn't require that.
You can ask staff afterwards. They're, they're certainly gonna be willing to answer your question.
I'd like to ask the town attorney.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved and, and Mr. Nord, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I'm just following Robert's Rules of Order and that's the rules, Parliamentarian rules for, for operating. And you may ask your question of staff after the meeting. They'll be happy to have that. And I'm sure through your social media contacts, you can take the results of that out to the public.
Request for information, Mr. Parliamentarian, is that a true statement?
One can ask for a point of information to ask a general question, but not to engage in speaking and it becomes a moot point once the vote was called.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the participation in the settlement arising from the National Opioid Crisis Class Action lawsuit.
No approval.
Second.
Ms. Reese, if you'd just give us a briefest overview of that so people understand what we're doing here.
Well, it'll be very brief. We were notified by the State Attorney General's Office that there was a class action lawsuit regarding opioid providers and that the town, all municipalities throughout Illinois could sign on to, not as a participant in the lawsuit, but could sign on and participate in the settlement. And so we, I did notify council this back, I believe in October. So we did notify the Attorney General's Office that we intended to be included in a potential settlement. And now in order to move forward, the Attorney General's Office has requested that more documents be executed. So we're asking council just to formally authorize the, the execution of various documents as they come forward. We anticipate when there is a disbursement from the class action lawsuit, the town could receive approximately $281,000, but over an 18-year period. So it is a, a long disbursement process. So we don't really know when we would expect to receive any funds, but there are some limitations on how those funds can be spent, but we'll certainly learn more as, as we gather more information from the Attorney General's Office as this progresses.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. This comes down to about $16,000 a year, you know, which is not, not, not a whole lot of money. But have we looked at, if we get this money, what program we can do or how this money can be used? Because we don't want to start a program that costs $80,000 a year for only getting $16,000, you know? So that's kind of my, my concern.
Not specifically, no, because of the dollar amount, I believe there's a 70% requirement that it be spent on opioid addiction education and. Prevention, thank you. Prevention programs, that, that is not our area of expertise. So certainly we would have to figure out how best to use those dollars in, in compliance with the settlement.
Do we know if it's something, if we get this money, we can just hand it off to like the Department of Health or somebody that might be better suited to fund a solution like that?
Not at this point, we don't know.
And if we vote tonight to approve this, are we locking ourselves into accepting this money and creating a program that is gonna cost more?
No, we're not creating any programs at all. We're just asking council to authorize us to continue to execute documents as required for the settlement that we're receiving from the Attorney General's Office.
Okay, and as we get more information, then we can decide later whether it's worthwhile to accept the money or if it's gonna cost us more. Is that right?
No, this, this basically sets us up to receive the disbursement from the state in the settlement process eventually, whenever that is to begin. And we are not at this point proposing any new programs. We're not proposing turning around and giving the money to anybody else. We're not proposing to hire staff. We're not proposing anything of the like. We've got time to figure out how to spend those fairly minimal dollars annually and in accordance with the class action lawsuit.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. We have no public comment post-meeting, so before taking a motion for adjournment, there are concerns or comments. Motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.